We have one hundred and forty-four. And there was probably more than that. Eight new jointed. No, we could. A lot of the ones on this end were all day parking, so we can park them behind where we had some cameras parked. That first section we passed under tight in and then we left, we left a big drive, you know, where they did the volume between the road and that. So stupid. Somebody told me.
So Owen's nickname is Sparkle. So when the guys at all Cadillac here in Iowa. Look, they weren't the other night.
Oh, Barnes is, yeah. JP.
If I said something about. Great happy over here. So yes, the right one. Over Charles? Yeah, oh, yeah. But he had always been. Don't want to tell us what areas.
Okay, I, I, you know.
I have allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me start right away. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight for our work session, and then we'll also move into a special board meeting to approve a few action items and then into a closed session. Um, especially thank you for being here since it's finally made gorgeous today. We have almost every ball field occupied tonight, and so I know I think myself I have more of a reason. We're also there. Um, our first agenda tonight item is more informational. This is the Northern Pines Mental Health Contract for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I wanted this on the agenda item just to see if there's any questions because sometimes I get some emails and phone calls ever since COVID and people hear that there's some services at school. And then the governor started talking about a proposal having full services at school where we do medical checks and we do, that's not the work that had, hasn't gone anywhere. I know Ract doesn't have that. So I just wanted to kind of review the proposal with you on that this is for mental health services that parents can assign kids up for the school to refer for and services are specialized students. I just want to make sure that if you're getting phone calls or emails like I get that you understand what are hotel type agency services that we provide and they're only for mental health and only with correct information. Any questions? Love the Northern Pines contract. Um, then we'll go to BCD Classroom Health Edition update. Jolene has some information on the funding for that. We're really hoping that we are going to have some additional information for you as far as projected cost. Morrison will be scheduled back this Friday. We have a perp in the dead, so Jolene wants to share with chance.
Um, yes, so I kind of just am making a ballpark assumption on, on what these projects would cost. The original estimate that we were given was one point two, one point three, somewhere around there. And, and that's what Morrison is working on right now is to come up with a more concrete number of what he, what they're projecting for, what we've asked of them. That being said, we have talked about setting aside fund balance in a committed for construction account. So using part of our Esser federal dollars and some of our existing fund balance to kind of fund this project. So I took the starting balance, starting fund balances or the general funds and, um, and the capital funds down at the bottom, budgeted revised revenues, budgeted revised expenses, and then a projected ending fund balance. I'm sorry, guys, this is the. Sorry.
Oh, that, I should have known it didn't have.
Um, so just a projected end, ending fund balance, that's of June thirtieth. So you kind of have an idea of where we're sitting at the end of the year. The unappropriated fund balance is basically our, our checking account fund balance that can be used for anything. So if you look at the beginning fund balance of three point five million, projected ending fund balance of three point six, I pulled those numbers down at the bottom. And that is roughly a thirty-six point nine percent fund balance at the beginning, thirty-eight percent at the end projected with revised budgeted revenues and expenses. That then is where we would take money from to set aside for this committed for construction account. So I just gave three different numbers just as a talking point and we'll follow, follow your lead on where we want to go with this. If we take five hundred thousand out of that, um, projected ending fund balance, that drops to three point one million or thirty-two point seven percent. Six hundred thousand out of that same fund balance would take us down to three million or thirty-two point seven. And then seven hundred thousand, um, down to two point eight million or thirty point six percent.
Jolene, if we, if we do this and we take it out of and put it in a committed funds, have we, is that considered federal dollars then?
Nope.
So my, my most frustrating part of this, when we do these projects is that prevailing wage comes in when we use these, when we use federal dollars to do this. And I'd like to see the board take a really good stance on getting this done to where, you know, we can get this done for a lot less if we use, do take this approach than what we do with prevailing wage. And, um.
It's if any amount of federal dollars are used.
So when we, when we do.
So even if you fund half the project out of pocket and half the project is federal, the whole thing goes prevailing wage.
Right, but if we're looking at one point three and we take something out and get it ready and then, because we're looking at twenty twenty-four, correct?
This, the summer of twenty twenty. Because we're skipping summer twenty twenty-two.
Three thirty, it's for thirty-one. I've been off a little bit all day, so I apologize. So we have one more full, almost a full calendar year.
Spring of next year would be starting. So it would be the next budget cycle that you start dipping into.
Just thought, guys.
So one point three is with using the prevailing, how to use that, right?
We are almost guaranteed to use prevailing wage regardless because it also applies to state funds. And so.
We use anything.
Yeah.
Unless we're prepared.
It's pretty, it's pretty hard to get out.
Grab the whole.
Yeah.
Rock.
Especially with a project this big that's going to have to go through all of the state's approval processes and permitting and things like that.
Yeah, I know, but sometimes change is good.
And we can, we can commit funds at any time to put aside to a committed construction account. So it's, we don't necessarily have a deadline of June thirtieth. Because these are unreserved funds being put aside for something specific. So, so we can wait and get the official estimate from Norrison before making the final decision on what we want to set aside.
Well, we have to have a, a year mark for a specific purpose when we set it aside.
When we set it aside, yep, yep. And that's more, that's more us sitting at a board level that that's what that money is being, you're not hiding it anywhere, you're not tucking it away for anything else. It's very specifically set and trackable to those construction costs. So once we have a, once we have an official number from, or a semi-official number from Norrison, we can discuss again what number we feel comfortable with putting aside.
Well, I don't think it's going to put out from the one point three. Now, that was price of materials and everything going on, so whether we wait or not, it's.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Jolene.
Thank you. Next, moving into policy work, just want to start off by saying that reviewing the policies, we, we have some work ahead of us. And one thing that I'd like to bring up just for your consideration before we start digging into the policies is if the board would think about going, using Board Book, computerized program through MSBA that loads up all the documents, all the policies, all the things that we hand out for you on the computer, it'll all be preloaded. Something MSBA has been recommending for a while, it still operate this way, but I want to be sending a lot of paper your way while we go through this, this process. And so on the management side, paper side, and just being able to reference back, Board Book would be a very useful tool. Um, you decide now, you can take over MSBA's website and take a look at Board Book yourself. They've arranged to have a demo here, but it's just something I just want to throw out there that there'll be a lot of policy work going on for this. In the meantime, moving forward, I sent you a email just kind of talking about the headings on our policy. We have about three, like four different ways our policies are now marked, and it really depends on whether you're looking at online or in the policy book. And it's, it's gotten a little confusing. Uh, when has it been reviewed? When has it been renewed? Are we using the current, the most updated policy with that? And my recommendation to you would be to simplify our policy by having just Piner Rabacus policy number and title. And I'll be able to share this all with you, what it would look like. But I only want a few dates on there. I want one side to say this is when Piner Rabacus adopted it. And this is when Piner Rabacus revised it. On the other side, it will say when the original MSB recommendation date was and when their most recent revised date was. The reason I still have MSB on there is that's where we really gather our guidance from, our legal policy guidance. Those are the only things that need to be on there. We need to review it. And that's why I put together a little spreadsheet for you. Um, it's not done yet. There's a lot of dates to put in here and fix up that. But this is something that we could put online with our policy and in Board Book. And we can track all of our policies very simple by the series that they're in, and on what top it has its original MSBA date and then the Piner Rabacus date. The MSBA revision date and the PRB revise date. And the reason that they have to be separate is that you don't have to accept all the revisions that MSB puts forward to you. You might change it or add some of what we're reading yourself, but if we're using MSB guidance, I think it's nice to have when they are having it there. And then I added the columns of when we reviewed it, when the next review will be, and how often we have to review it. Because there's some of them on there that are old and italicized. We need to review and then at least have a discussion at the board table every single year. Most of them are triannual, every three years, but there are a few that need to be discussed every year. So I just wanted to share that with you a little bit while you think about Board Book as we move into the actual review process. I emailed all these copies to you because it was going to be a lot of reading that there's no way you're going to be able to review them, sending them to you at the board table tonight unless you wanted to stay here for quite a while. Upper review tonight, uh, we'll start off with policy five oh six. This is student discipline. And the policy that we have adopted is in line with MSBA's most current revision that they have, so we are up to date with that. But I wanted to review a couple of areas I think that we should point out is, uh, one is in section two, page two of the policy, talks about the areas of responsibility. And off the time that we talked about responsibility, we're talking about administrative responsibility. But our policy clearly states the responsibility of the school board, the superintendent, principal, teachers, as well as other district personnel, parents and legal guardians, the students and community members. Now, some of the responsibilities is fairly light by being supportive. Other areas of the responsibility is working with the school on the behavior that is happening and making sure that we are addressing them equitably so that everybody has the same chance at education, that we're taking care of the issues and behaviors at hand. Another area on there is, um, section four, page three, the student rights is clearly defined in our policy in a very simple sentence that says, all students have the right to an education and the right to learn. That means that we have classrooms in which learning can take place. And that we also try to make sure that all of our kids have access to that classroom. On page four, we have written student conduct. This is something that I think we need to revert back to and do a real strong push at PRB. Making sure that our students and our families completely understand what the code of student conduct does and the consequences of what if you do not follow the student code of conduct. And that will come up later in these policies as you'll find out, many of them are intertwined and connected and reference each other. And then on page eight, it's the disciplinary actions that are options to use on there. And we go from things that are fairly light to some things that have very consequential such as suspensions, expulsions and removals. But it also is something that is set up as an MSBA policy that we don't have all these options here. For example, we don't have Saturday school, which is listed here. So sometimes when people take to look at the policy, they have to understand that this is legal advice on what schools can do. Not all of them, we have the capability of doing or have enforced. Any questions on policy five oh six? Like I said, this is just a review. So we'll go into specific cases later tonight in the closed session, but this is just questions regarding the policy.
I, I guess, as, as we go through this and the general consensus on the board is whether we change the heading or not or not, the nuts and bolts of the policy that, that, you know, as, as you're going through your notes and as I was reading, uh, we were all reading these is that policies are, they're not, they don't seem to be too vague. I mean, it's, it's nuts and bolts. You said it's right here. It's students have rights and then everything that go along. And so, again, no matter what, we're hearing what the policy says or if that, that language needs to be changed, whether we're here for fifteen minutes or a lot of paper, we use this board thing. The board needs to get their head around what, what's really going on and then leading it from example that we know the policies, this is what's going on, following to the letter of what, that's on the paper. And, uh, so as, as we go through these guys, as, as you're looking, if you have questions, you know, I think that we should, we should send Jonathan a question, you know, after an email or whatever the case may be. But, uh, you know, as we go through first readings of these five oh one, five oh three and five ten, make sure we all understand what's going on. Because there, I don't want a gray area or up to the discretion of whatever. These are black and white. And I think that our families, our students and our staff will be way better off as we go through this. So keep that in the back of your mind.
Next policy is five ten point one, extracurricular and activity eligibility. And this one is, um, again, just for a review and making sure that people understand it because when we started adhering, this is where that, um, student code of conduct falls into. That it outlines that our participants in extracurricular activities need to maintain at least a C minus average, which is a one point six grade point average. And they cannot receive an F in any class, not one. If they have an F in the class, they will lose their eligibility. And that kind of goes into student attendance, that goes into party, and then also goes into good standing. Because students must be in good standing and not exceed twelve days of absences, not twelve consecutive, twelve days during the school year in order to be in good standing on attendance, participate in extracurricular activities. They also, on a number eight, it states students must be in good standing behaviorally and not have outstanding behavioral referrals which require a consequence. Students not in good standing will not be, or will be ineligible for practice or events. And that is at the discretion of the building administration and activities director. There is an appeal process. But that's something that we haven't been enforcing all that heavily. And with some of the behavioral things that get reported and we get seen in the hallways, there are some things that we can be doing because we do have the tools at our disposal to make sure it happens. But that goes back to student, this one part of parent responsibility, student responsibility, faculty responsibility and administration responsibility. That if we have students that are in force behavioral standing and the activities director and principal say, you're out of your sport for a while until some things improve. We need to make sure that the parents understand this is serious and went to a level beyond warning and we need to have a removal from the activity. Again, we have those tools. On five twenty-five, um, policy five twenty-five, this is the violence prevention and staff. And some of the things that I wanted to make sure that we point out is, um, just on page five, is that we're providing the appropriate support for students when they're in need. The student support, we have outlined some of the things that we will have in board policy designed to protect their personal safety. And that goes, connects to student discipline, extracurricular, and some of the other ones that will be updated tonight such as the weapons policy, the student attendance policy, the school activities policy. These are all connected. Um, the prevention strategies that need to be put in place and the implementation of the policy. There are a few things that we have said in policy that were going to happen that to my knowledge right now are not happening. And that is, for example, on page four of this policy is that we would develop a curriculum that teaches the social skills such as maintaining self-control, building communication skills, forming friendships, resisting peer pressure, being appropriately assertive, forming positive relationships with adults and resolving conflict in nonviolent ways. High school administration has been trying to get an advisory period going for a while. It's something that we are working on right now and hopefully we have the framework to have an advisory period once a week that we can be implementing some of these curriculums. Again, it's a tool that we have here that has not been implemented. Our school day and our time with our students and teachers are a little bit shorter. Just want to bring these up because this is some stuff that we are going to have to tackle as a school district in order to start working on these. Any questions on policy five twenty-five?
On this one, do you have other ones on?
Oh, I.
Page four?
I have a little.
Okay, are, are we gonna, are we gonna go, you know, look, I have, I have a list of them too, so I just.
Yep. No, we have each that we're going to establish clear school rules that prevent and deter violence. Outside of the handbook and the weapons policy, we don't have clear building rules established posted around the school with the curriculum. That we're going to establish a conflict resolution training for our students and our staff. We're going to develop a curriculum that teaches critical viewing and listening and analyzing to the mass media and recognizing stereotypes, distinguish fact from fantasy and identify differences in behavior and values that conflict with our own. Social media. How do our kids use social media and determine what is correct, what's not correct, what is drama, what doesn't need to be brought in here? We need to develop students that are critical thinkers. Um, another one is down bottom, this will be a little bit more for the elementary level to build up to the high school that they hopefully already have it. But just to develop that curriculum on character education, how do I persevere when things get challenging? How do I become attentiveness when, um, my mind might be drifting a little bit, truthfulness, the respect for authority? These are things that, again, we have in policy that we need to make sure that we implement it in the classroom. Uh, page four of policy five twenty-five. If you're looking at the online, if you're looking at the online version, I got mine off the board book, so they might be, they might be off a little bit on the form.
It's, uh, it's, give them the, if the number, or the letter corresponds with it, it's, uh.
Is it section, uh, section four, prevention strategy and signal.
It's at page three, you can go into four.
Letter Q. Letter Q.
I do, okay.
That's the last one.
Sorry, Roger.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Yeah, and then some of them on, um, the first page of three, also intervention, is the training that we need to do with staff. We've been talking about this the last couple of meetings on how we do not have a lot of staff development time with them to be working on intervention strategies, building up their, their toolbox in which to use for students, how to differentiate within the classroom and how to address the students that have these social emotional traumas. It's a very quick rundown. But I wanted to point those out because those are, um, they are up to date on those three policies. So we're not requesting or recommending any language change, but we need to refamiliarize ourselves with the language that we do have.
I would, I would definitely agree because if you take that, the extracurricular and activity eligibility policy and you all of a sudden say, you know, these, these rules are here and the rules have been here and I always, I mean, these policies is, was adopted in two thousand and three, original, this policy was two thousand or three revised in fifteen, reviewed in eighteen and it's a triannual. Well, I'm looking at these, what's going on, if you, if you go to our student or staff and say, we're going to implement it to the letter of the law. You're going to have to do a lot of education to our parents and our students because, I don't believe, twelve days, that's three hours here, three hours here, three hours here, correct? And when, when I found, that adds up to twelve, twelve days. Uh, and that sometimes can be tough for doctor's appointments and all the other stuff. Um, I don't know that.
Are those, are that considered un? Unexcused. Unexcused. Yep, and we'll talk about that with our student attendance policy coming up in five oh three, it'll outline and we'll review a little bit of what gets marked as excused, what's unexcused and what is the school's reactions to each of those.
And, and then again with excuse and unexcuses, is there the letter of, the letter of family vacations, whether mom and dad approve it, is that excused or unexcused?
Family vacations are unexcused, which I think will be a shock to a lot of people in my policy.
So, I mean, that, those are the things that when we start, we're reviewing them. These three policies, if we, you know, that we're just reviewing tonight, they have strong implications from, for staff and students that you're really going to shake the apple cart, heart. There's going to be a lot of people going, whoa, 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 why are we all of a sudden doing it? Well, we're, enough's enough is what we're saying and this is what we're doing and this is what we're doing. So be aware. Your phones are going to start ringing because all of a sudden you're going to maintain a one point six average, no S, that means no S at any given time throughout the quarter, right? Not just at the end of the quarter?
At the end of the quarter it is. I mean, you, if you've got an F on an assignment or a test, you're, you're still okay. But hopefully everything else brings that up to where you get to passing grade.
And most of those sports have great checks where they have S, they have to be doing their work to get them on, but.
But not everybody. And that's when you say we're being fair and consistent, then everybody's going to follow this. And I'll use wrestling because you're sitting right here and on basketball, basketball and wrestling doesn't have something different just because.
Right.
The belief of the coach. Again, just on review, guys, these are some pretty heavy headers.
Okay, um, next area are some policies I'm bringing forward and this is we their first reading because these will have recommended changes with them. Um, our first, first one is policy five oh one, school weapons policy. This was just revised by MSBA in twenty twenty-one. And the biggest change here for, um, for the change is that they've added flammable liquids, combustible liquids as possible weapons. For in schools, so that would be added to the policy. And then also that if there's a violation of a weapons policy here, we would make a reference or referral to law enforcement, which is already a pretty common practice here as we have a liaison officer right here that can check with.
Flammable liquids, are you talking about gas can?
Uh, gasoline or anything that's combustible.
Whinders?
Yep. Yep.
In your vehicle, you mean, or...
I'm, I'm your school person. This, this one is more on your, on your person.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yep, if they're in school here, you cannot have any combustible liquids in school.
So what would, what would be the difference if you have a gun in your car, if you have a knife in your car, and you have a lighter in your car?
Hell yeah.
I know, but I just want to, I want to make sure that for...
Part of the discussion, yep.
Part of the discussion as we go through this.
What they have, um, in here is, because again, it's an MSBA policy, this is what we adopted, and we can make some changes to it to, um, to reflect the values of PRB. What they have is that there are some, um, extenuating circumstances that they have. If there's a school that has, um, a, a target shooting, um, round, um, you might be able to bring your, your weapon to school because they have a safe for it, where you could bring it in, it will get locked up. We don't have that here. They also have, is if you were to find a weapon, or you forgot a weapon, if a student would turn it in right away, it would not count against them. Or is, I have a knife, I didn't know it, or I found it, I'll bring it back in here and bring it to you because they're in possession of it, I'm giving it to you as a building administrator, as a teacher, I'm turning it in, there wouldn't necessarily be a consequence for it. So they just have those types of exceptions to it for students so that they, they don't get a protection over it. But if it is on our school grounds and they're bringing it and they added the word willfully bringing it to school, now it's not a matter of what not to use. I mean, this is, this is just the first reading, so please take a look at it. This one didn't have a whole lot of changes. Sometimes you'll see a lot of red off in the margin because what they did is they, they changed abbreviations to the full words, um, statutes, they took out some of their symbols.
So in, so when you do board book, are you going to add this and this?
Board book would allow us to load up the, um, the redline copy right by it. You would have the ability, to my understanding, that you could view them side by side on there, um, you can go back and take a look to see what did we discuss two weeks ago? From the first reading with any notes on there, um, you would have access to a lot more information.
Because this is very beneficial for when we go through to see this. This doesn't happen with this, this one.
Yep.
I don't know if you guys saw that one.
Yeah.
Which is two different ones that comes through. It's sometimes difficult when you're going through to, to do these. I've had, Kate's been on it for a long time, but, you know, you'll get a hundred and fifty pages of redline policies. Well, it's really nice to have the old or this, or you could just have one and it shows you all the changes to see if it's applicable to my purposes.
In the board book, would that show any change of the week every, like, ten, two or three?
Board book would be able to go back to all the notes and minutes of the changes we had on there, but then it would also connect your way to our policy book. So you would always have the, the full access of, um, all series right there. Next policy I'm bringing forward for revisions, first reading, is five oh three, student attendance. This also was just updated by MSBA in, um, twenty twenty-one, and we are looking at adopting and following, following the MSBA recommendations here. Um, on the second page, it would, it talks about some of the following reasons that should be sufficient in how to excuse absences. And one of the areas that they are adding in there is, um, that we do our very best to, um, accommodate any religious holidays or, um, certain holidays events that happen to come up, um, if people need to take off for that. Otherwise, it's a lot of abbreviations again. And then they had written up before the dissemination of this policy. And this one, again, I think we need to make sure that we put in big bold on what is excused and unexcused, um, because unexcused absences are, um, such things as family vacations. To take an appointment, um, against these doctors, we can excuse those, but then they should have a medical note coming back that they actually were attending a doctor. If they're gone all day, it should be something that means you need to be gone all day, otherwise you should be coming, um, back, um, to school. And the policy is the redline, it has some blank spots, but just so that you know that you have in previous adoptions of this policy, I'd mark that the students would have two days to make up work, um, to get that back in. And we were recommending staying at that two days for work. But the one area that I also want to point out that, um, I would not be enforcing, um, I, I do not agree that, we can have a discussion with it, um, through, um, the readings of this, is I don't believe in reductions of grades as a consequence for attendance or, um, behavior. That academic grades are to reflect academic and standards progress. I don't believe that a teacher can say, you're causing problems or you weren't here, I'm now going to lower your grade to a B. That's not something that I...
Well, well, won't that happen if it's an unexcused absence, they, they don't have the opportunity to make up that work?
If they don't get the work in, and it's unexcused and it's not, you know, they might have that consequence, a natural consequence to them, but I don't think as a teacher that I would say, I am going to do this to you.
Meaning they got all their work in, they had an A, and because you're unexcused, uh, you're not going to get a B or a C?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I think that we need to have our academic standards meet the academic ability of our kids. Like it's a first reading, so we can have that discussion more, that's just my feeling on it. And then on, um, five ten, policy five ten, this is another school activities, and this has a real simple statement in there. Um, I thought I'd give us a, an easy one to do. We have an addition, um, from MSBA back in twenty nineteen that the school board will ensure that any funds raised for extracurricular activities will be spent only on extracurricular activities. Basically, that means extracurricular fundraising cannot supplement a, a general fund expense or our reserve account. Um, so it's just making sure that we have that in policy. So I tossed one easy one in there. Any questions on those policies for their first reading? Um, and we are going to move into, oh, I do have one other policy question. This is a question for you. Um, we have a policy number nine oh four, distribution materials on school district property by non-school personnel. So they're, they don't work at school, um, an outside group. When outside group, um, uh, the Indians had contacted us and asked for permission to hand out, um, a new testament to fourth grade students. I've, um, checked it around, it's probably that has happened here in the past. It's something that, um, in past schools that I've worked in, we've never allowed it in the school that we handed out to them. It was something that could be offered to fourth graders on a set location outside of the building. And that would go along with, um, the policy that we have, but it didn't have anything on there as far as what curriculum came out. And so I wanted to check with the school board, nine oh four, if you allowed this in the past, or if you guys have any feelings one way or the other.
I'd like to take a look at the policy. I know that we come in as firefighters. A better, better understanding. And I'll, I'll give you for instances, um, since we are live and, and we do have some people from the, the, um, paper here. You know, when you start picking and choosing what you're going to hand out, what you're not going to hand out, um, I think it gets in, even, even now, it gets in a gray area, um, depending on your beliefs or your non-beliefs or whatever the case may be. Um, we come in as firefighters and handle a lot of stuff for fire prevention. Is that okay? No, no. You know, so when we start doing this, you know, if, if we have done it in the past or we're not, again, as we go through this process, and this is a lot of things that we're talking about now, and a lot of work that this board is going to have to do, um, in the next, I don't want to say a fast sixty days, but long term, is look into some of these things where it doesn't matter if it was past practices, if it doesn't follow the policy, it doesn't happen. So I guess I would put it on as a review for the next one. Um, guys, get your teeth cut into it, let's take a look at it, and then we can make a recommendation, but I don't know enough to top my head.
They, they did ask board to hand up this year, and I gave them a date of possible of May twenty-fifth, on an outside the building, well, set location which they can offer to kids, kids will not be required to take it, we're not going to hand it to them, I don't know, but it's a P O box or their backpacks, nothing like that. Is that something that you would like to go forward other than twenty-fifth, or would you like me to give them a call and say we need to, we need to review our policy? I think the best thing we can do is give those kick bibles, but whether it's on, on there or if it's somewhere else, as long as they get to do it, I guess I'm going to do it that way. I mean, there's a lot of things going on, there's a lot of things that, I understand you got to have a policy for, for everything, and the next person can come through with it, I want to give away this, or I want to get that, I understand that. We also have to look at if, you know, if it's, if it's been done in the past, um, um, I don't know, I just think that the absolute best thing we can be doing to those kids is give them a Bible. I'm just going to say that. Whatever that takes to do that. There are, um, seven factors that, in the policy, so that we would consider and then, and one of them is whether the material is educationally related. Um, and that could be something that we could require awareness, yes, it's education related, we could, if you do it on fire safety, or other things coming in, school might not be education related. Um, what is the sense of the, the greater community? Is it something that they would view as objectionable or not objectionable? Um, but that's, there's some guidance there, but very great guidance. And it's, it's one of those things that will echo Chris's sentiment a little bit in that when you open the door, it is open.
I think airing on the side of caution, you know, I, you know, I think it's okay to make it available. I personally think it's okay to make it available. If they want the Bible, they can keep the Bible. And we, we hand out stuff for the kitchen at the end of the corner down here at the New Life Church, whatever the case may be, and I know that, as you say, Dave, you are correct, it seems like we have to have a policy for everything. Um, you know, obviously it's educational, whether you believe in the Bible or not, there's education either way. And so I guess I wouldn't, I, I would, I would be okay with an off, off, off-site until we can look at whatever we want to do and then come up with a guidance of what we're going to, how we're going to move it forward. Yeah, and I don't like really, I don't like gray, I like black and white.
Well, right now, our location, just so you know, is not off-site, it's out of the building. You know, it's out front of the district office on the sidewalk, so it is away from bus traffic, it's away from any of, uh, anyone interrupting any traffic. They would just stay in there and just be able to handle it.
And they're not be tough on them in their bags, they're, if those kids come over and get them, then they hand them to them.
Yep.
So...
No different than prayer at the pool, as far as I'm concerned. You want to concur, they're going to have prayer at the pool, that's their decision to go.
Um, and the next one is the curriculum lead position that I, um, discussed and presented at the last board meeting, and I gave you some updates, some weekly updates. I sent you the work, um, kind of the working job description, and that's also what's printed out here before you. The only thing that's changed from when I sent it to you as an email is I just had curriculum lead slash director position because that was part of our discussion that we had last week on top of what it should be.
And when you have any questions on this, um, actually, this is the last thing on our work session, and we're, we are going to go into, uh, actually a board meeting, and that is the first thing that they're going to ask for a motion to second and a pass to authorize the curriculum lead. So if anybody has any questions, I, I think that we should discuss it now and then have any other discussion, um, after the motion to second. But any, any questions for Jonathan on this?
The professional development plan, that is for all of their teaching for the year, or is that for the teachers to learn, to teach better?
Everything. Teach better, um, give new techniques, learn socially emotional, um, techniques, um, do some of the CEUs that licensing requires, how we improve as a school. Staff development as a whole is, is very large, and staff development also includes, um, not just our teachers, but our educational assistants, administration.
So this would include the state affairs too for their development plan?
Yep, paraprofessionals, bus drivers. What do we need to do, um, for those plans?
And we, we've taken this to go to a full-time position, correct?
Yeah, and that would be one of my recommendations, Sue, is when I had discussed about a curriculum lead position, I was looking at it being part of our teacher's master agreement for, um, two hours, that's about the best way we could have that, that fit. If we were looking at a full-time position, I think it would serve us best if we had that be, um, an abwohl position like our board or our directors, with the exception of the, the kid director.
And realistically, can we get this done for two hours a day? I mean, this, this, this looks, this looks awesome. It really does. Jonathan, I don't know how we're, so we can get all this done in two hours.
No, we would not get that list done in two hours, and two hours would give us a start on full listing. And a lot of that stuff is ongoing. Um, right now, we don't have anybody, um, solely responsible for these students. And so two hours definitely will help, will be beneficial, um, will cover everything on this listing.
So we have, we have two hours that we're asking for, but we have a lot of other people that if we took a full-time position and generated it, would it give them more, these other people that are doing some of the assessments and the things that are on there, more time for classroom and more time, or is that naive in thinking that?
No, it, it would probably, we would, um, a curriculum person, um, it would make the most sense if we had curriculum director to move our assessment coordination that was reassigned to the students this year, um, and move that into the curriculum person, and then have the dean be a full-time dean of students and not working with the assessment. Um, the availability of a curriculum person that's all day to work with teachers, departments, grade levels, throughout the day during their prep time and something like that, where they can sit down and work together on the standards, curriculum, um, adoption as well as implementation, is much more available than just the two hours. So, um, there's a lot more different work that we could give this year for full time. But that could, that could be expensive, and I just wanted to make sure that we also take a look at what is for the long haul. I, I don't want a quick fix, I want something that's going to endure for a while, so that we can, you can be right back into the spot that we're in.
Do you feel if you had someone doing this just two hours a day, that you really couldn't accomplish a lot?
You wouldn't be able to get as much done as we need to.
Right, and so then basically back to square one, and you're just kind of wasting time.
The two hour would kind of be a person that can either see a lot of things, but not develop a lot of things.
And would that take away though from that person already gives that they have?
Yes. Do we refine this, somebody just for two hour, would we be reassigned and reevaluating the two hours more?
I think you're looking at it, at that way as robbing Peter to pay Paul and we're back to square one. If, you know, if you're having something, you have two hours and you're just touching the tip of the iceberg, you're really not getting done what you need to get done to , because circle bowl is my opinion.
I like the idea of having it as an abwohl and not in a master.
Correct.
Would that be a position you think we could fill, some of the others we just don't get filled?
Yes, I, I think we would have interest in that.
Do you kind of consider this a springboard? Okay, we're going to try this, we'll do the two hour person, we're going to see how this all goes with the idea that we're going to put somebody in full time, possibly?
Depending on how it works out.
But do you, but in your mind, you think that this is the direction, or this is the step we need to take, to take that first step and then see, get into that, or do we need to be just take the bull by the horn and do a full-time run of the bat, or don't you think we can, we can get that to?
I think we have the energy and the capacity within the district to take the bull by the horns and, and go right at this head-on versus waiting our way into it with the two hours. If that makes sense?
Yeah.
And again, it's just, I want to also be just be enlightened for the board.
And, and I, I truly appreciate that. But I, I think there's, there's also, you know, the community members and their constituents that are out there that say, you know, you ask us why. And I think Katie brought it up, I was a couple of years ago too, is getting that communication of what we're doing and why. You know, yes, it's going to come at a cost, yes, we're doing it this, but this is all changing. We're fixing this, we're doing this. This is step A to step B to step C to drive it home. You know, like you said, you know, wait in, the water's too cold, you got to come back out. Or you just can't involve, away you go. Right, like you said, it's easier for me to go ask for those funds based on the fact that this is the need and this is why this is the need. You know, we're going to, we're going to get ready to see some, some, some test scores coming out of COVID that we're going to need a lot of work. We're going to work on curriculum, we're going to work on all these things. And I, I just don't think, and I'm thank you for your recommendation, two hours a day is enough. So let's find the money.
So my, yeah, so my question to you is, do you think?
To do this list?
No.
So how does it play into the strategic plan?
The strategic plan is one for student achievement, would be the biggest one for student achievement. We also have staff development on there for student achievement. This is possible. And also even tackles facility usage a little bit. I mean, you're looking at expanding your CTE program, what does that curriculum or what does that program look like for a CTE? Do we have the capacity within the building? So it really kind of hits above, I said, step one, about three of our five benchmarks.
So when, when we go into this and authorize a position, I'm going to ask whoever makes the motion to make a motion, whether it's the two-hour or the full-time, when they make the motion.
Do we got the work done?
It would be probably.
Do we got the work done?
I think it would be sort of with where we have our, our directors at, kind of taking a look. Part of it would be looking at what areas are, are days, if they're being extended contract, it would not be the 180-some days of a teacher contract. Who, of course, would be working some summer days. And it would be, that staff development going on, the planning of all workshops and things going on for that. So Cindy and I would take a look at what we can compare with, with the area and our needs. And then we would put a toll after work and say, fine. Jolene, can you fix?
She wasn't saying a word, I was looking right at her. She didn't say no. So ideally, the candidate would have what credentials for this position?
Ideally.
Only when things might apply for the directors, Christy? Are they retired teachers possibly?
No, we're probably looking at teachers that would like to make a jump up into administrative ranks someday. Somebody would like to have some of that curriculum responsibility. There is a licensure for curriculum directors out there. That's not required for this position. With the people that that is, their area of expertise that they would like to develop in that area. Most commonly, you'll see people that want to take a step up into administrative ranks.
So you're, you're thinking like masters?
Oh, yeah.
Thinking of masters.
Yeah, it, yeah, you're going to need to be experienced. You're going to need to have your advanced studies. So you think if either way, if we had the two-hour deal or if we had the full-time, we get applicants, good applicants on either one, do you think? The, the two-hour applicants is going to be a lot less because that's going to be the house applicants. That's, I mean, you're not going to find somebody that's going to need just two hours. I'm going to commit for that, you know, to make that work. But with the director position, then I would say we go internally as well. Next term, we'll get the best candidate available. Like, do I ask somebody that's interested in the two hours? I obviously internally don't want to be interested in two hours.
Any other questions?
Two-hour position, that would be a triple master contract situation.
That would be my recommendation to do that.
All right, any other questions for Jonathan? We'll go ahead and, uh,
Special session.
Move into a special session, like David, can you see the full time we got there?
Twenty-three.
So six twenty-three, we'll call a special session ordered. First thing on the, first thing on the list is we're authorizing posting for curriculum lead.
Now, if we change your director? It, it all, I take that back, I jumped the devil's heart. What you decided your motion?
Curriculum lead. So again, as, as I'm asking for a motion and a second, whoever makes the motion, a lead would be the two-hour, a director would be a full-time. And then also you have to specify whether it's going to be at-will or part of the master agreement.
I will make the motion that we authorize posting for a curriculum director at-will.
So we have a motion from Roger for authorize a posting for a curriculum director at-will. Second by Wanda. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, approve the police liaison contract for 2022 through 2024. Motion by Ryan. Second by Dave. Discussion.
My apologies, I'm supposed to be at the last.
It's okay, Will, I, Will. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Make a motion to change the June regular board meeting from June 6th to June 13th. Motion by Ryan.
Second.
Second by Roger. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, adopt the resolution for payment or rollover of personal leave days for school bus drivers. Motion by Wanda. Second by Dave. Discussion.
I'll just plug in a little bit on this with the end of our school year coming down. We have a number of school bus drivers that haven't used any of their personal leave days. And we're kind of very thankful to work for that. And we just want to give, we don't want them to miss out on anything that by their contract, they can roll over one day. And some of them are still sitting on like possibly another two days of personal leave. That we'd like to give them the opportunity for the district to buy out their personal days that they have this year. Or if they'd like to still carry one over next year, because maybe they have a plan in place to make sure that they have that option. Kind of just showing them some appreciation for the work that they've been doing and keeping us running.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Item 11 is a motion per Minnesota state law 13D subdivision two to close the meeting in order to discuss information that is not public regarding student discipline. Motion by Wanda. Second by Roger. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Take a short look. Siesta. If you can sleep, I'm going to el banyo.